I'm going to call this meeting to order at six oh two, March twentieth, twenty twenty four. All right, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We the republic with one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, roll call.
Commissioner Ehorn is absent tonight. I'm sure they're going to make it. So Commissioner Rutt.
Yes.
Commissioner Valencia.
President.
Commissioner Myers.
President.
And Commissioner Bobadia.
President.
Thank you.
Okay, any changes to the agenda? No changes to the agenda. Public comment consent calendar forum. All matters in the consent calendar are considered routine or approved by one motion, handbought unless commission members or the city planner first requests that a matter be removed for separate discussion and action. Individuals wishing to address the commission concerning consent calendar items or regarding matters that are not already on the agenda are invited to make oral comments of up to three minutes at this time. Please address your comments to the chairman, commission members, and not staff. Enter the audience by state. Commission is not permitted to undertake any action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. If you have any documentation you would like to retrieve to the commission, please mail it to the city planner at two oh one North Flaxton Street, Willow's, California, nine five nine eight eight, or email it to B Turner at CityWillows.org. So public. We'll just move on to minutes of approval. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of January twenty fourth, twenty twenty four.
Can I get a second on that?
I'll second it.
Yeah, all the favors approving the minutes of January twenty four, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty four. Say aye.
Aye.
opposed and discussion and action calendar. All matters in this section of the agenda are discussed and will be acted on individually. Individuals wishing to address commission concerning any of these items are invited to make oral comments of up to three minutes at this time. Please address your comments to the chairman of commission, not the staff and or the audience. When the chairman calls for public comment, please raise your hand to be acknowledged. While not required, the city requests that you please state your name clearly for the audio recording. By state law, commission is not permitted to undertake any action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. If you have any documentation you would like to steward to the commission, please mail it to the city planner at two oh one North Flaxton Street, Willow's, California, nine five nine eight eight, or email it to B Turner at CityWillows.org. No comments up. We're going to do municipal code eighteen dot one four one dot zero six zero color scheme modification.
All right. Good afternoon, council. Joe Bentecourt. This is a follow-up item from the January twenty fourth, twenty twenty four Planning Commission meeting where we had some paint color selection and that staff was given direction to try to make this less ambiguous and have a clearer picture of what the applicant is to select and make everybody's lives easier hopefully through that process. So with that, we've done some some research. The attachments that you guys have as a redline municipal code edit, which I think will hopefully clear up the language and eliminate the specific listing of colors and link us more to a selected color palette that you guys are comfortable with. So that's the first page. And it's pretty minor. It just gets out of listing the colors in the municipal code, but also I think will give us a greater change to adjust later if needed. The second page is an example of a color palette that is an earth toned variety of green colors. So this is brought as an example of something that we could apply if you wanted to do this style, or we can go as specific as saying you will choose one of these five colors and the hex numbers listed. Or we can have the option of saying you can choose any one of these options or shade within these options. Kind of the problem I ran into that you guys may have as well is shades can change the color completely. So I do like a more specific calling out of a of a paint number or equivalent or a hex number, which is the red, blue, green composition of that of that paint. And then the last page is just some samples I pulled of colors that are currently listed in our municipal code. There's a little disclaimer at the top, and I'm not going to say this right probably, but oakry or o'tree was listed as a color. And when I tried to look this up, it's actually a mineral composition that can consist of red, yellow. So I think we should, if you want to stick with only using the colors as listed, we should definitely eliminate that one as it can kind of be any. And then the rest are just examples of reddish brown, brown, tan, gold, Roman gold, umber, earth green. And while it's listed as green and like we ran into last time, gold, green have a ton of different variations with it, which also led us to kind of narrow down to specific colors, if that's the direction. One other thing I'll add is just kind of direction and then take questions, kind of review these options is, you know, do we want to look at providing specific color options or ranges within those options? It's a little more straightforward with selecting actual colors and not leaving ranges there, even if it is a range of colors, having them specifically listed would provide clear direction to the applicant. And do you want to do you want to change the list of colors that we currently use to be either specific to colors that you guys select as individual colors? Or do you want to stick with the of gold, umber, earth green and try to just designate specific colors within a range of those colors, if that makes sense hopefully? Yeah, with that, I'll take any question.
So these are our current colors?
As listed, yes.
These are also our current colors?
Correct. There's a couple double dibs like the reddish brown. I just included two different variations and earth green and green are actually totally different, but the print doesn't show that. Just to kind of point out that the colors is listed brown. You can go from a dark brown that looks black to the lightest brown that looks white. So that's where this whole. I mean, even though it's soft earth tone muted, we specifically list brown as a color. So there's some definitely ambiguity there and also some kind of not clear language for the applicant as well. Yep. And then the green color is just something that I brought as an example of earth tones that if you stuck with green, we would define it something similar to this, if that possibility, or have fifty colors they choose from. And I was hoping to have a more complete set of colors and options to show you guys, but Sherwin-Williams is currently working on that. So hopefully I can get you a digital version when they when they come through or we'll change with whatever direction it's given based off of what you guys have in front of you.
Anybody have questions? Comments?
I'll make one more note here real quick. It's, we've got in there about deciding to move this forward or not. At this point, I think it'd be best just to do discussion. I don't think we'll be deciding anything anyways. But because this is listed in our municipal code, it will require city council approval. But we're doing a municipal code update right now. So with your recommendation, when we get to that point, we would include it in our municipal code update to address that. So we're not on any sort of time limit. That's probably going to take a little bit anyways to get that other big piece of the municipal code updated.
Just for clarification, did you say that from Sherwin-Williams, you're waiting to get like a more extensive color option from them in digital?
Yeah, there's, yeah, it'll it'll be something probably similar to the example I used for green, but a lot of it would, I told him to get all of their current colors and then give us a range of those colors to kind of have you guys look at. But there's also the option of picking colors that are within a certain range from. We can list a brand specifically, Sherwin-Williams, but then we just need to do an equivalent too. So we don't lock anybody to purchasing that brand, but colors are easy to match. So there's no, should be no issue with that.
I definitely like the the concept of this, you know, the color palette. You know, the example you're showing here for green, you know, it gives you a good idea of like, all right, I got choices.
Yeah.
You know, and you're not stuck to, you know, some like one or two colors that you may be written in the municipal code. So definitely I like that whole color palette.
Can I, can I lay this out on the table where everybody can see it?
Absolutely. Well, here, I'll, I'll take care of that. Oh, yeah, she's got the swatch.
So there's, there's different sections to the Sherwin-Williams color deck. And this is the the neutral section. Neutral colors tend to be muted where there's enough gray added to the color that that downplays the tone like in a green or a brown or, you know, a color like that. So it kind of downplays it from. And I'm just, I'm going to use.
More matted.
Yeah, just like this is really green. And so that color would have some gray added to it to soften it. And then our current code from what I could find, the colors that were describing there are actually considered earth tones from the sixties. So that goes to show us that earth tones evolve
Yes.
over what's in style or in fashion or whatever over time. I looked around a little bit on the internet and I found a city's code, their color code. And what they had done is they approved, they approved all of Sherwin-Williams neutral tones. So there's, I don't know, three hundred and some colors in the neutral palette. And then what they did is they they eliminated the colors that weren't felt to be of earth tone quality. And I just, I thought that that would be a lot easier route than trying to come up with three hundred colors that we felt were earth tone, then get a palette that somewhat what we're looking for and then omit those colors in the code, if that makes sense.
That these colors here that you're showing kind of remind me of the courthouse. And I, I think the courthouse is absolutely beautiful. The way they they painted that and the way that it blends in with the scenery, but yet stands out. I think it's beautiful. And I think there's a huge variety.
There's, there's blues, there's green, there's grays, there's topes, browns, and there, there isn't. And I was kind of, kind of excited to find this written somewhere and not just that it wasn't there in that palette. I did find it written that colors that are not considered earth tone are yellow, green, orange, red, blue, pink, purple, and black. I don't disagree. I don't agree with that in its entirety because I think there are tones of green that are definite lots of tones of green. In fact, we have lots of green going on in our town that truly are earth tone, but I was happy to see that yellow, orange, red, blue, pink, and purple are not of earth tone quality. What I found as a description of earth tone is that earth tone are muted and flat. And they're natural colors that are found in dirt, moss, trees, and rocks. Those are what earth tones are considered to be. But you can find I, what I what I found was kind of my feelings too about it, but I was able to actually find it written somewhere, if that makes sense. But you can find the opposite too, if you want.
Just to comment on that before, just because of the earth tone and wood tone comments. With the Muni code, what we can do also, if we wanted to go with this route, would be change the language to state neutral instead of earth tone or wood tone, as that's kind of the category that's in there. Still link it directly to those colors, but don't make any cross contamination, I guess, or something that somebody considers an earth tone. We just remove that language and put a neutral in there that really lines up with with those kinds of colors might be a better way to go.
Then you're not looking to see what an earth tone is.
Yeah, exactly.
It's a broad spectrum.
And we'll still point them to the colors and everything like that, but just eliminating that earth tone, wood tone language and going with neutral may be a more clarific, more clarity to the applicant on their, where they're going with their color selection.
So with that, I had, one of my questions was going to be about the the municipal code that's being rewritten for this anyway. And I'm glad to see that that we're a little bit ahead of the game on that because we're discussing it before it's in front of us. But there were some other things that I had questions about, and that was that is it typical for a building permit to be given, I guess is the word, is a building permit fulfilled prior to a color being approved?
If it's a new building needs to go through the design review process, Holly, are you stating with the? So would we not issue a permit until every qualification of the design review is met?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we would, what we're going to get better about in the past is verifying before we finalize the permit, we would be issuing permits throughout, but ones specific to, say, if there's a requirement for paving. We would not finalize that until we go back and review what is in the design review process and work with our inspector. And if they strayed from that in any way during the inspection process is usually where it'd be caught, then they would be notified that we're not going to finalize this permit until it's done in accordance with what was approved at the design review.
So there is some accountability on the other hand.
Yep. And that definitely came up on recently here with making sure that that our inspector has the full package of what you guys have proven these design review processes. So he's fully aware that he's got extra things to check besides just his code compliance things.
Okay. Another question that I had. I felt in a way that we were kind of held captive, I'll say it that way, to the applicant with the building that painted a different color than what was actually approved. And because he said to us that once he got his occupancy permit, he could, we could make him paint it the colors that were approved, but once he got his occupancy permit, he could paint it whatever color he wanted to. I think we need to button that up in our code. I didn't have a chance. I, you know, I printed all of our stuff that you would, if you want to get a building permit, all that. I have not had time to read it. I think we need something in our code so that if we're going to go to the work of setting these colors, we need to have something in our code when that, that states because my understanding is you can paint whatever color you want unless you need a permit.
The code, I believe, would state that regardless of a permit is pulled or not, that certain aspects and work being done would require you to still adhere to that design review process, including repainting or landscaping even. So but I don't know if we necessarily have penalties or teeth within that code to force somebody to repaint back to a color that was approved or to come back to the planning commission. I would have to look into that, but I do know that it states regardless of pulling a permit or not. Obviously, it makes it harder to identify. We have to physically see it or have it reported to us if they don't pull a permit. But if we do see that or it's brought forward, I think we have it codified that they are to adhere to the standards as well.
Can you confirm that?
Yeah.
Okay, I, what I want to know is do you need a permit to paint basically?
Yeah, or if I get approved, can I just paint it whatever color afterwards? After I'm done with my occupancy. Yeah, and I'll double, I'll get you the code language. I think we have it, Holly, and I'll get you, get you that.
And then the other thing was when we see buildings that are being painted that aren't within the code, how do we how do we take control of that?
It would be basically a report to the the city. Probably the best method would be through, it's not necessarily code enforcement, but it is our code enforcement complaint forum. And if a building is outside of the colors as they currently are, then we could, we would take action from there, but we would basically rely on our staff to notice it and report it to us, which is pretty limited, or a public involvement reporting it to us and having us look into those issues. Unfortunately, because they don't need to pull a permit for a lot of those things, we would have nothing come through our office that would indicate that something is happening, unless it's reported to us by public or our staff sees it and brings it to our attention.
Okay, so I think it's important, especially means we're looking at colors, that that number one, that if you're going to paint, and this is of course all commercial, I'm talking about, that you do need a permit or approval of the color that you're painting, however that, however that is.
Yeah.
Not sure. And then a way to hold people accountable to do that. And and what would that be? Would it, you know, I did read something on that and it was where the, the the owner, the tenant, or the property manager is notified that the building needs to be brought up to code within thirty days. If it's, if they're not able to do that because of weather or whatever, they're granted ninety days. And then after that period of time, now they're noncompliant with the code. What is the action?
Yeah, normally I won't speak to this process, but what we would do on a code enforcement complaint, if they're refusing to do it, we would, we would do it as the city staff or contract somebody, say somebody does a demo of their house and they've been notified to to abate the issue. If they didn't do that after so many warnings, I don't know the exact, and there's legal requirements for it, but we would notice them if no actions taken within a certain amount of time. Then we would hire a contractor or do it ourselves, and then they would be billed at the rate or cost that the city was incurred to do that. And possibly penalties depending on how it's, how it's codified or in the municipal code. But those things can, normally it's, it's always at least the recoup of our time or our money to do it for them. And then usually most of the time penalties or some sort of fines on top of that for lack of action.
I'm hoping that we have such a broad spectrum that that won't be a problem. But I, it's something that I, and I don't know about the others, would like to see included in the new municipal code if it's not already.
Yep. Yeah, I'll look into that information as far as, you know, painting after the fact of some things approved and then what our process would be for abating the issue and if there's fines in that and get you that information. And then we can discuss on making those recommendations for the municipal code update when we take that to the council. Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? Questions on that?
I apologize. I don't know the answer to this, but like when you have a like Willow Walk, when you have that and you have an empty building and you decide you're going to rent it, you're going to make a business, are those people even aware that they need to be checking on the colors? Because
Most likely not.
That's what I was concerned about. I mean, you'd want to be proactive so you're not going after them, you know what I mean?
Exactly.
They painted it.
Exactly. And things we can do to try to to make it known or or catch better on our end again is to get the code enforcement officer involved, not code enforcement, sorry, our permit inspector involved when they're doing these updates. If he notices things of the, that aren't necessarily always permitted with color changes that that's brought to our attention. The the property owner at the end of the day is responsible for any of the tenants or their actions within that building. So
For letting them know that there's
Not for letting them, at the end of the day, they're going to be responsible. So yes, I guess letting them know. They're, they're the ones that would be aware of the code because they're the ones that are going to get the fine for it. Whether they pass that fine on to the tenant or whatever happens afterwards, our, our stance is always that the building owner, not the tenant, is the person responsible in ninety-nine percent of cases.
I would think that most people would want to make sure that whatever they were picking wasn't going to come back and bite them, you know?
Absolutely. And it's, I think, a little bit of outreach and these things just sit and people, people don't know.
Right.
And it's, it is unfair if they don't, we don't like to use the line of the fishing game. Well, it's your job to know all the regulations. It's very cumbersome.
DMV says ignorance of the laws, no excuse.
There we go. Exactly. But people tend to pay attention to those things more than code. And hopefully with the code update, it'll be clear to find things, but I think we can do more outreach and proactive on things like that, plus involving the inspector to notice things like that and catch it early so we avoid costs to them if they do need to repaint and all those kinds of things. We want the rules followed, but if we can avoid any loss after somebody's done something, that's always the best situation for everybody involved with it.
Especially since they're trying to do something positive for our community.
I thought it would be interesting for the city to do a little blurb in the newspaper, letting like picking the three most broken codes in our city and doing like a blurb in the newspaper notifying people that these are not I'm not going to say not that they're not tolerated because they all are, but that it's not the standard or whatever you would want to call it and see if some things would kind of clean up themselves.
And I think, I can't promise a newspaper or anything at this point, but we do our monthly newsletter. So that might be a great thing to kind of call out, you know, three different municipal codes, each monthly newsletter and include them in there. And then, you know, put them on Facebook here and there if they're
And educate people.
Yeah, yep. No, I agree wholeheartedly and get it, get it out there so people are aware of it. And if they see it or if it's on Facebook and they see it through our page, maybe they take that extra step to go read the other things that they weren't aware of. So I think we can definitely do that with the newsletter. And each, each monthly newsletter includes a municipal codes that, hey, you may not have known this, but
And weed abatement, I was thinking about yesterday, weed abatement, notifying people now before the chief starts driving around town and taking down all these addresses, letting people know so that they have an opportunity and it would be less time also for the city because now they've been made aware, if that makes sense. And I don't know if the city does pre-warn the citizens that weed abatement time is coming, get your alleys mowed or whatever. It, it kind of makes sense, I think.
I won't speak to weed abatement. That's a chief monks problem. I know they do some sort of outreach, but I don't know how early or often, but we can, I know they have a process. I know, yeah. So we'll, I will make them aware of the comments that advertising would help out on that.
My only had, my only comment would be last time we met, there seemed to be a concern with accent colors. Like the neutral color concept gives a lot of choices. But we have accent colors and I read exceptions for franchising of chains. On a case by case basis, I could see a business coming and saying, why them not me, you know?
Exactly. I just, for that, if we have a McDonald's, we already have one, I'll use a Carl's Jr. Come in. They're not going to bend to our rules on painting it their color. So I think it's, I haven't done a lot of research into it. It's honestly something that popped up after the meeting and just discussion. Subway is not going to do red and black for their color, or, you know, they're not going to do an earth tone. So things of those they are different and is it the fairest thing to do it? But the franchise agreements, you know, if it would be something that, hey, we can't allow this because of your colors or that, I just wanted to add something in there that spoke to the, the red and yellow, you know, fast food restaurants.
I also think though, because I hear what you're saying, but I think that when you look at places like McDonald's and Subway and Burger King and all of those, those kinds of locations are located along the freeway so that the public recognizes, oh, there's a McDonald's, there's a Burger King. So we're kind of talking about our downtown area, you know what I mean? Which is more not so much franchise.
Red eighty-eight, that was the same marketing concept that she was talking about. Like she has a brand and she has a certain model like in Davis, and she wanted to bring it here. And that was the, I think, an area where there was a pushback on that.
Yeah, but Davis didn't allow her to paint what she's painting here.
Yeah, so those are the same concepts. Like someone's going to bring that up.
What, what we could do is, I mean, franchise is pretty easily definable, I think, and, and we can What, what we could do is, is uh, I mean, franchise is pretty easily definable, I think, and, and we can put a, a. Define what chain restaurant means in five locations or more. Um, we're not, I mean, we can keep it very specific to, I mean, I think franchise and corporation i- is kind of its own term and, and not allow for a chain definition. I mean, again, they're on a case by case basis, and if somebody comes in and doesn't want a neutral color, they can still make their case to. To not, you know, it's just got to, it'll be approved by you guys or not. So the option to say, yeah, it's fine for McDonald's would still be there. It would just be a little more, and it'd still be case by case discretion. Um, but I did want to add something in there that just spoke to it a little more and, and say this will be looked at and. Um, it's a little different of a scenario than your, your regular smaller business.
Yeah, well, definitely the new concept that you brought up, like visually for someone to see like, okay, I got off.
Yep.
Um, in regards to the fran- uh, franchise and chain stores. Um, if, if you, if you go out to the freeway and you look, you will notice that all the buildings are earth tone. But they are allowed to use their franchise colors, and I'm going to say we could set a percentage.
Mm-hmm.
Five to fifteen percent can be, you know, and that's kind of what you see out there, you know, the Chevron. Chevron's colors are red, white and blue, but their building is not any of those colors. It's an earth tone building and then they've used their franchise colors as accents and signage.
Yep.
And, and I think we really. We, we really need to stick with that. We can't have red, white and blue buildings and orange and red and yellow buildings.
Agreed, yeah. And that, so I'm going to, I'll do some additional research on this too. I'm going to look at some other cities um and see what their, what their code is for that, and then. Um, what we can do is, is look at. If I don't find good examples about outlining percentage of the accent colors. Things of that nature, because you're right, they're, they are all based in neutral and then the accent color signs, all those kinds of things. But you know, the sign is not, is a whole different part of the building color, but um, except, exceptions for trims. Um. I'll look into that and come back to what this next presentation that we'll be doing. Get some, get some information or, or ba- better, better edit the code to. Specifically spell out what we're looking for, and I think a, a trim percentage may be a good way to go, but I'll, I'll look into that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I'm going to, you guys get if I just go over direction real quick and make sure that I've got everything that you guys want to see. We'll be, we'll be doing another presentation, hopefully with a lot more final colors and Marie will be here for that, so we'll hopefully have all five of you guys. I don't know if it'll be at the next month, um, but I've got, I'm going to change, uh, eliminate earth tone and wood tone from the municipal code and use the word neutral. We're going to use the neutral palette that Holly has provided from the, uh, from Sherwin-Williams as our base colors and. I'll get you those guys in, in, in between now and next meeting, you can uh look at which ones you'd like to exclude or other ones that you'd like to include in that base color. Uh, and they'll have a whole digital design hopefully for presentation on those colors, we can talk about elimination of that process. Um, I think everything else was just a follow-up regarding the code, Holly, and the ability to um. Kind of have some, some teeth through the process involved in painting after the design review process. Um, and then the franchise agreement trim percentages and looking into that. But sound like I got everything?
And the, the um, and maybe you meant this, I know because we talked a lot about, about a lot of different things. Um, finding out if you do need an actual permit just to paint.
Okay, yeah, yep. Got that, right?
Cause that's kind of where the city gets their control over.
Yep.
You know what, what the housing, I know it's different, or do you not even?
I haven't dove into that, no, I haven't. I know it's called out and it's under this section, but I haven't done the, the look into that. And if it's a design review or if there's colors, but I, I probably will be before next meeting just for moving on sake.
Serious.
Yeah.
How different it is or if it is.
Yeah, I'm guessing it's a lot more or a lot less information, um, but. It'd be, it'd be a good thing to look at and see if we need to touch up anything at that point as well, so we can get that.
All right, we'll move on to comments and reports, uh, make some comments right there. Uh, sorry, I missed the last meeting, um. Had to attend my children's sporting events. I did miss it today though, I thought, sorry. Get one, um, but um, yeah, just. Glad we're doing, you know, going forward and stuff, so appreciate everybody stepping in.
Thank you for taking this. Oh yeah, congratulations.
Oh, thanks, appreciate it. I saw that in a minute, okay, okay. Uh, staff comments, reports.
None at this time.
Um, how soon do you typically find out when there won't be a meeting?
Um, it, it just depends, we, we try to hold off as late as possible, uh, in case we get an application that, that we need to come with, um. But yeah, it, it does, it does vary, um, we, we could set something as a kind of a deadline to try to let you guys know if we don't currently have, you know, something. A week before, yeah. Earlier cancellation notice.
I'm not constantly looking at the city website to see if there's a new firm, that's usually how I find out.
Okay. Yeah, I think we can set up a, a little bit of a, a deadline, no problem, and let you guys know earlier.
Is there anything in the pipeline right now?
Uh, so we've got a, um, a hotel application that we have a permit for that's currently in environmental review process and has a pretty. Heavy environmental review process, um, so that one may take a little bit depending on the sequel documentation and it's got a fish and wildlife assessment. Um, and that's, that would be on North Tumble. Um, it. Huh? So it would actually be to the north, uh, yep, um, leave next to the existing. Hotel Holiday Inn in the empty lot there, yeah, so that's a three-story building. Can't remember the square footage, but pretty big, pretty big project, so we've got that in planning right now and going through the environmental. Um. Other things, kind of the um Coyote Solon, which is in the building permit process at this point. Uh, but they were a new business looking to open, it's, it's almost complete with their improvements through the um building department, so that might be.
Is that the one, is that the one that we approved?
Yeah, yep, yep, it would have been.
I was going to ask where, what the status was.
Yeah, they, they have been, they had some ADA upgrades to get done on their building permit regarding the restroom, I believe, but they're really close, um, so that one should be wrapping up hopefully soon. Um, and I think that's probably, it's Jack in the Box is continuing on their plan review, um, so we've gotten. Um, information is coming in and back and forth again at this point, so they're in their civil engineer review process and. Um, they'll, they'll be looking to complete that hopefully sooner than later as well.
Joey, where will Jack in the Box go?
Uh, it, it would be next to the um car wash, the hand car wash. Located to the west of that in the lot, like it used to be a, uh.
Whaling lube.
Oh, okay, okay.
Right behind Chevron area.
Uh, yeah, in, in between Chevron and the car wash station, that lot there, I believe it's got a security fence on it, but they've been, they've been in the plan check process here for a little bit, so. Think that's all, yeah.
All right, that's all, then I'm going to adjourn the meeting at uh six forty.